Good afternoon. The 69th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. I ask all folks who are joining us here tonight to ensure that your electronic devices are turned off or at a minimum placed on silence. Our clergy tonight for this invocation unfortunately had a last-minute emergency. So to replace the invocation, we are going to take a quick moment of silence. With that now, we're going to state the Pledge of Allegiance if you could please stand. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to acknowledge some special guests that are joining us. I don't see them here yet. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The gentleman from the 3rd District?
Mr. President, Member Torrance is not present.
Say it again?
Member Torrance is not present.
Okay.
I heard his name called.
No, you have to call the roll. She still calls through the roll.
Only the people who are present.
No, we've always done this since the beginning. She still calls through the entire roll. But thank you. We know that his absence has been noted. With that now, if we could go into adoption of the journal. Madam Clerk, if you could please?
Mr. President, the Journal for the December 4, 2023, regular meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the Journal has been adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the Journal is now adopted. Bill signed, the mayor can be found at the beginning of page 2 of the agenda. Now we're going to move on to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first nomination.
EA23-0215 Philip Costa, MBA, CVP, Member, Commission of Sustainability, District 11.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk?
EA23-0216 Jay Morgan Grove, PhD, Member, Commission on Sustainability, District 5.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. We're going to pause briefly right there for bills to be introduced and we are going to call up the amazing young men who also happen to be, come on up, the state champions in the Class 4A/3A. This is Merigand Thaler Vocational Technical Football Team. Come on up. Also affectionately known as Merivo, the head coach, Mr. James Clash, and we have members of the team. So the city council would love to extend its sincere congratulations on this honorable occasion. I believe it's two in the past three years, right?
Yes.
Which is a huge feat. 4A/3A is big ball, it's big school ball, and we're so, so happy and proud. I know your councilwoman, Odette Ramos, is proud. And we have a city presidential citation. I, Nick J. Mosby, President of Baltimore City Council, hereby present the president's Citation to Merigand Thaler Vocational Technical High School, Class 4A/3A State Champions in recognition of your second MPSAA championship and for overcoming extraordinary adversity to capture the title of the 4A/3A State Champions. In witnessware of the city of Baltimore extends its sincerest congratulations. And I've affixed my signature to the citation on this memorable occasion given under the corporate seal of the city of Baltimore this 7th day of December 2023. Give it up for him again. Come on guys. You got everyone? I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
All right, ready? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, man. Congratulations, sir.
I didn't think that was here yet, still. I've got a question. Do these girls, they go in a, whenever, but just have a little on time? Or are probably people that go to work or whatever?
You can just call them.
Who was missing?
But just call through and then we'll figure it out. It'll be easier that way.
Just call all?
Yeah, just call them.
All right.
Now moving on to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0471, sale of property, 3,000 Hyman Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in certain property that is located at 3,000 Hyman Avenue, Block 7703D, Lot 009A, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Administration and Office of the Comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, next bill. Oh, you want to speak on that? I'm sorry. You have to stand.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I requested to be added to the bill at the lunch and it's not reflected on the calendar.
Okay, cool. If the Executive Secretary Terry could note that Councilwoman Felicia Porter would like to be added to 23-0471 as a co-sponsor. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0472, rezoning, 301 South President Street, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 301 South President Street, Block 1421, Lot 192526, as outlined and read on the accompanying plate, for the C5DE zoning district to the C5DC zoning district. Sponsor, Cohen.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Resolutions to be introduced. Madam Clerk? I don't think we have one. Is there one from the floor? Who's doing it from the floor? At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilman Chris Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I introduce that, I had a few remarks. Is that, is the appropriate time?
Yeah, sure, definitely.
Okay. The last few weeks have been incredibly difficult for so many across all Baltimore communities, our state, our country, our world. We watched with horror the violence unleashed by Hamas, a terrorist organization who horrifically killed 1,200 men, women, and children on October 7th, with many more still being held against their will and away from their families. It's heartbreaking. The impact that this has had on all of us, but in particular Jewish people who face ongoing antisemitism and a long history of trauma cannot be overstated. We continue to watch with equal horror as Israel's military response has been nothing less than cruel, cutting off food, water, and fuel to the entire population of Gaza and has since killed over 12,000 men, women, and children, most of which are Palestinian civilians through massive bombing campaigns. It's heartbreaking. The impact of this response, compounded by the notable increase of Islamophobia and the long history of trauma, cannot be overstated. We are watching in dismay the rise in both antisemitism and Islamist phobia in the United States as the situation in the Middle East and around the globe has our communities increasingly more divided and polarized by the day. Antisemitism represents a form of prejudice, discrimination, or hostility towards Jewish people, either individually or collectively. Its manifestations include verbal or physical attacks, stereotypes, conspiracy theories, and discriminatory policies. Historically, antisemitism has evolved, encompassing religious persecution to racial and ethnic bias. However, it is absolutely vital to differentiate between legitimate criticism of the policies and actions of the Israeli military campaign in Gaza, its impact on innocent civilians, which falls within the realm of political discourse, and antisemitism, which stems from bigotry and discrimination against Jewish individuals based on their identity. While condemning antisemitism is crucial, and let me be clear, I unequivocally denounce antisemitism, discussions regarding the Israel-Palestine conflict should permit the valid critiques of military actions against civilians without unfairly categorizing such criticisms as antisemitic. Just as denouncing the terrorist group Hamas, and I unequivocally denounce them, should not constitute being Islamophobic. Acknowledging the sensitivity and the complexity of this issue is paramount. Engaging in conversations should be approached with care, creating an environment where diverse opinions can be expressed without resorting to labeling individuals as participants in acts of antisemitism or other forms of bigotry. We are all feeling the collective pain of the horrific attacks on October 7th and the humanitarian crisis that continues to follow. Immediately following the attacks by Hamas, I personally reached out to my colleague from the 6th District, knowing firsthand that he had family and friends living in Israel, that he frequently traveled to and from to visit them. He cared about them. I shared with them that I was saddened by what was happening and that I would keep them all in prayer. I meant what I said then, and I still do. Since that time, I've learned that one of our other colleagues from the 1st District, Councilman Cohen, also has family in Israel and has been personally impacted by these events. I keep him and his family in my prayers as well. I did that without second thought. Throughout my career, I've worked with and for members of the Jewish community in Baltimore City, like when I worked for Comprehensive Housing Assistance, Inc., a community development corporation located in Park Heights. It was a role that I learned in depth about Jewish culture, traditions, values, and how they build community. I broke bread with Councilman Schleifer at his home. I've shared meals with others across the community and their Sukkas during the Festival of Sukkot. I've collected and distributed donations to those in need at the burning of hamits the morning before the start of Passover. And I've worked tirelessly to leverage resources for five of our city's most religiously and ethnically diverse neighborhoods. I have roots in Baltimore's Jewish community and believe that they, just as much as anyone, have an absolute right to exist in peace and in harmony both here and abroad. I've worked with the Islamic community as well, co-hosting community meetings with my colleague, Councilman Schleifer, to hear the voices of Baltimore's Islamic residents in Howard Park, a neighborhood we both represent. I've walked alongside leaders in the Muslim community, spreading a message of peace and calling to an end to the violence plaguing our city with 300 Men March, We Are Us, and so many more. We have a thriving Islamic community in Baltimore, and they too have an absolute right to exist in peace and harmony both here and abroad. With that said, it is my true belief that the Islamic community has the right to be recognized in this current context equally as much as the Jewish community, a moment in which both Muslim and Jewish people are being harmed by the violence of antisemitism, Islamophobia, and not to be relegated to a statement made by this body four years ago following an entirely different but also traumatizing terrorist attack. Now, more than ever, when we choose our words and in the context of this body, when we choose which resolutions we want to stand behind, it's critical that we choose to value all communities and are inclusive. Language matters. Statements have impacts, even if they're just public statements. Condemning Islamophobia and antisemitism sends a strong message that discrimination has no place in our community in the past or in this current moment that we are in now. Hence, us seeing more and more the mounting chorus, including many of us in these chambers, urging an end to the fighting. Showing Up for Racial Justice Baltimore released a letter where over 50 greater Baltimore-based organizations demanding a ceasefire, organizations that range from Jewish Voice for Peace to the United Maryland Muslim Council. This secession is vital to facilitate the unhindered flow of aid, allow the evacuation of the injured, initiate negotiations for the release of all hostages, and implement measures to protect civilians while mitigating unacceptable levels of harm and suffering. Regrettably, this is yet to be accomplished. The resolution before you today has the explicit purpose of urging collaborative conversations and turning them into concrete, meaningful measures by which those in the seats of power that can actually make happen while embodying both the Jewish community and Islamic community. Although a humanitarian ceasefire and the return of hostages may serve as a starting point, a more comprehensive process is needed to address the underlying issues and move towards a lasting resolution of peace and safety for all innocent people being harmed. While this body has no influence or authority over those decisions, it's been clear over the past few days that our communities want our voice to be heard in these positions. So I'm asking you all today to stand with inclusivity, to stand in acknowledgement of the trauma that this has had on all communities in Baltimore City and across the globe, all of us together condemning Islamophobia and antisemitism. And from here, work together to unify the communities that we represent and not accept that they must remain divided by this. Thank you. And, Mr. President, I believe one of my other colleagues also has remarks as well.
So guys, what happens is, I thought you were presenting the resolution. So this is not an opportunity for us to...
Well, I'd like to...
Hold on, hold on one second.
Sure.
It's not an opportunity for us to go around and, I guess, opine on our beliefs, our faith, our concerns. Right now, we're doing the business of the council. The business of the council is to address bills. So my understanding was that you were providing some brief remarks and then presenting the resolution before the council.
Okay.
Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. President, I would like to suspend the rules to allow for a resolution to be introduced on the floor of the council.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules have now been suspended. The floor is yours.
I'd like to move the resolution on the council member's desk, Mr. President.
Correct. Say it again. So it's been a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. I believe there's some unreadiness. I see, we'll go to Chairman Costello. Be pleased you have to stand when you're speaking.
Thank you, Mr. President. Point of order, don't we need to suspend the rules to move for adoption on the same day to advance a bill from first to second reader?
Yeah, I was under the impression that's what we just suspended. Is that not accurate?
No, I thought the motion was to move the bill.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said I would, I said I had a motion to suspend the rules to introduce the bill, and then that was done without readiness, and then I asked to move the bill on your desk.
Yeah, I believe we're good there. You good, Chairman Costello? Any additional unreadiness? Chairman Schleifer?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's not lost on me that we're having this conversation on the first night of Hanukkah. But I want to just be clear. All I was asking for on Monday night at the city council meeting was to condemn antisemitism and to condemn the terrorist attack that occurred on October 7th against innocent Jewish civilians. Unfortunately, those who chose not to support it made it the very first resolution that this city council failed to pass, the first one. But before I get into this biased and factually incorrect resolution, I want to point out first that the mere introduction of this resolution further perpetuates the double standard that the U.S. State Department includes in their definition as antisemitism. Just the other day, the co-sponsors of the resolution put out a statement and complained about the timing and process of the rushed resolution, which everybody in this room knows. It's common practice to submit bills after the hopper deadline. It's common practice to suspend the rules for immediate adoption. Like, one of my colleagues who was sponsoring this resolution did so just two meetings ago on calling for immediate adoption for a resolution for Medicaid for All, which passed unanimously. Additionally, this city council, this body, this, everybody in this room, voted to support a resolution that had not been previously seen by us before the meeting. Even once the resolution was introduced, it was handed to us, and within 12 seconds of a resolution being handed to us, every single member of the city council voted unanimously to pass that resolution, which is impossible to read it. Now, that topic was an environmental issue, wasn't discussing the slaughter of Jews, but nobody read it. It was 12 seconds, it followed the same procedure. Now, I want to get into some of the context of this resolution. There's a few copies, I just have to see which one we're talking about.
The last copy and the final copy that you guys presented to us, because we don't have it on our desk, is from 3:30. Is that accurate? Oh, I don't have one. I'm sorry, I don't have one. Can I get it? Say it again?
I have a few, I have a few different...
Hold on, hold on, just want to make sure. You have to turn your mic on as well, Chairman. But I just want to make sure, is that, it was the one from 3:30?
That's correct.
3:29, okay. If somebody could give me the latest copy printed, I would appreciate it. I'm sorry, Ms. Chair, please proceed.
Now, some of the context that was presented to us, even stated amongst other things, was condemning Israel's right to exist. Not that I really need to go much further than some of that context, but I will. This resolution includes information that has come directly from the Hamas-run government's Health Department, the very same terror organization that my resolution aimed to condemn. How can anybody trust anything that these terrorists are saying? These are the same terrorists that are having trouble locating some of the hostages they took just eight weeks ago. This part, this resolution also has the chutzpah to call for the release of hostages in Israel and in Gaza. Let me just tell you about some of the hostages. Here's the hostages. Here are the hostages that were kidnapped on October 7th. Gadi Moses. Tal Shom. Gad HaGai. Judith Lynn Weinstein, an American citizen. Chaim Perry. Amarim Cooper, 85 years old. Elad Katsir. Yoram Metzger, 80 years old. Omar Nutra. Leary Albag. David Cunio. Ariel Cunio. Tamir Adar. Yair Jacob. Ohad Yerulami. Avitar David. Ofar Kalderon. Itzik Algarot. Karina Ariev. Yossi Shiravi. Keith Samuel Segal, an American citizen. Fernando Merriman. Louis Har. Daniela Gilboa. Ilya Kohn. Carmel Got. Neek Bittsir. Liorif Rodef. Of Or Levy. Hersh Gilberg Poland, American citizen. Omar Wenkert. Omar Shemtov. Ohad Ben Ami. Almag Mayor John. Dolav Yehud. Arbel Yehud. Eden Yoroshami. Eitan Horn. Amit Esther Buschgila. Itai Savitsky. Elkana Barabat. Noah Argmani. Avitan Or. Alexander Danzig. Orion Hernandez Paradox. Sagiv Kalphon. Shlomo Mansour, 85-year-old. Bipin Jashi. Edan Alexander. Sasha Alexander. Eden Zachariah. Eitan Avraham. Avraham Mandar. Bar Kusban. Agam Berger. Yotan Hayim. Ziv Engal Berman, twins. Naama Levy. Nadav Poel. Yosef Ohana. Itai Chen, an American citizen. Joshua Leol Moel. Matan Argans. Uriel Baroch. Ron Benjamin. Ram Belvelski. Ben Kohn. Nimrod Kohn. Uri Dano. Sagai Dekel. Rami Gonan. Inbar... Inbar Hayim. Maxim Herkin. Sahai Edan. Andrei Kolozov. Eitan Lavi. Elakaim Shlomo Liebman. Alex Lubinov. Tamir Nemrati. Michelle Nessenbaum. Rony Parchviski. Yonatan Mordechai. Alon Shimeraz. Eli Shirabi. Edan Shidvi. Deron Steinbrecher. Ilan Weiss. Ilya Toledoano. Shlomo Ziv. Benka Juchova. Hansak Tyanana. Cynthia Suikam. Almug Sarasu. Itzik Gerolter. Yosef Al-Zedan. Samir Fayud Al-Talkat. Kaide Faran. Oded Livshitz. Avira Mingutsi. Shachar Baruch. And then we have a list of people who've been rescued. Not by a counterattack, rescued by, from being held hostage in terror tunnels. Here's a whole packet of people who had been taken that day, and thankfully were rescued. And then there's a whole list of people who've been just straight-up murdered, simply for being Jewish, for celebrating at a music festival. And then we have full families that are still being held in terror tunnels, talking about a ceasefire, a resolution, talking about a ceasefire. This is the Babais family, Sherry and Yardeen. And their two sons, Ariel and Kaffir. Many of us have kids here, a 10-month-old, being held in a terror tunnel. I just listed off a few hundred names. Can anyone here, please tell me one person, name one person that's being held hostage in Israel? This resolution says to release hostages that are being held in Israel. I've never heard that before. The first time I've ever seen that was in this resolution that was just introduced. I watch the news, I've been following this around the clock. I haven't seen it. I haven't even heard anybody make such a claim. How are we being asked to vote on a resolution that is just baseless? There, I, I don't, can, does any, can, please cut me off. Does any, can anybody name one hostage that's being held in Israel? Can you name a hostage for me?
Chairman Schleifer, I don't think this mic's going to work, but I think overall...
Chairman Schleifer, are you asking, are you ready to sit down?
I, I could, I could, I could finish, but I mean, I would like to know if somebody can name one single hostage that's being held in Israel.
Thank you, Chairman Schleifer, and again, I think, I think it's important to think about the language used and clarity. So, one thing I'll point to, the exchange of terms that, I'll do it like this, the change, the change of terms with hostages has also been for what's been termed prisoners in Israel. Now, as I, as I, as I mentioned before in my, my previous remarks, again, you know, we see that there are some horrendous things that have been happening as it relates to folks being held hostage, folks have been kidnapped, folks who have, and especially women who have been sexually assaulted by Hamas. So, we do recognize that Israeli folks are going through the situation. The challenge that we're dealing with as it relates to the Middle East, again, the issue is the lack of a two-state solution at this point. So, given the fact, we have to understand that Hamas is not the government for Palestine. I think that's to be really clear. And so, what's also happening is that there are folks who have then been imprisoned in Israel for things like throwing rocks and other infractions, and there's some other infractions as well. And so, if you look at what's been happening in terms of exchange, it's been a one-for-three exchange. So, again, if you look at the, the terms that were used in terms of hostages in, in Israel for three prisoners, hostages that were held by Hamas, for every three prisoners that were being held in Israel that were from Palestine. So, that's part of the, the issue. So, I think it's a bit of a nomenclature, a bit of an issue as well. But again, Councilmember Schleifer, Chairman Schleifer, I understand your perspective, but I did want to provide that clarity. So, I don't think we have a, a, a list of names, but I think it's important to recognize the language being used and why. And then I would also mention, I think it's important if folks really want to do a deeper dive into this, you could look at the UN. So, again, I'm looking at something about the UN Security Council, what it's called, called for as it relates to a ceasefire, because the challenge we're also dealing with is indiscriminate violence, right? And so, the fact is, one of the things that the UN has, has instructed Israel to do, as well as the United States, is to limit the number of civilian casualties, because, again, the position from Israel is essentially that until the hostages are released, they will keep bombing and bombarding the Gaza Strip with those, those, those devices. So, again, I understand where everybody's coming from. I just think the language has to be important. Hopefully, that provides some clarity. Thank you.
Chairman Schleifer?
Thank you, and thank you to my colleague. I always appreciate having that dialogue. And my point still stands. This resolution calls for the release of hostages in Israel and Gaza, implying as if that was the case. And I'm glad my colleague did bring up the UN, because honestly, I was confused by the resolution that I walked in here with, which talks about, in the subject line, Israel's occupation of Palestine, basically denying Israel's right to exist. And I just want to end with this, because all I, as I said in the beginning, all I came in here for on Monday night was simply asking to denounce anti-Semitism and condemn the heinous terrorist attack that happened on October 7th. So, let me just be clear. Even though my actions in the past have spoken for themselves, I have stood with every community and cosponsored resolutions anytime anyone was a victim of hate. When I stood with all of those communities, and every community across the world, across the globe, I never said, "Well, what about anti-Semitism?" I knew it was important to stand with those communities anytime hate roar its, its, its head. And I stood up, and I'll continue to stand up against hate against anybody. But this resolution further perpetuates the double standard that Jews around the globe are forced to live with every single day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there any other comments? So, we have a motion, it's been properly second. Is there any additional unreadiness? Hearing is... You have some unread, so you're not support, you have a concern about the process?
No.
All right. You want to explain your vote? Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah.
No problem. Is there any unreadiness at the moment, hearing and seeing none? Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll. I'm sorry, do you, do you have some issue or concern back there? You okay?
No.
I was just, you guys looked a little puzzled. Okay, if you could, please call a roll.
Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the explicit denunciation by my colleague of anti-Semitism and Islamophobia. And I will also thank you for your kind words and prayers for myself and Councilmember Schleifer's families, and we'll save it. This conflict, I think, has felt deeply personal to a number of us. I also understand and appreciate the value of resolutions as a tool to demonstrate solidarity with causes that are beyond our control. I've used them in the past, as have most people in this chamber, but what I've heard overwhelmingly from our constituents is that they want us focused on solving challenges facing Baltimore, not the Middle East. As we continue to struggle with violence and lose nearly 1,000 of our neighbors each year to overdose deaths, we have work to do in our own backyard. Let us be clear, we also have some great stories to tell as a city. Just yesterday, Baltimore was recognized by Mako for our 911 diversion program. We just won the Robert Wood Johnson Culture of Health Prize for our work on trauma-informed care. We're here tonight, in part, to pass Councilmember Ramos's important bill on inclusionary housing. The work this council has done on human trafficking, on public health, on transportation policies is extraordinary. Let's also be clear, we should unequivocally condemn Islamophobia, anti-Semitism, and other forms of bigotry. They are real, and they are rising across the United States and here in Maryland. We stand in solidarity with all of our communities that have experienced marginalization, but the idea that anyone in the Netanyahu government or Hamas is interested in what the Baltimore City Council has to say on this war, I think is not right. I vote no.
McCray?
May I explain my vote, Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I concur with my colleague from District 1, and I do fully denounce anti-Semitism and Islamophobia. In this case, I'm ready to focus on the work of my constituents here, and that does include folks from all areas across the world. I know that when war happens, that women and children are impacted the most. But on this bill, I'm saying no.
Dorsey? Conway?
May I explain my vote? This is not typically a debate that we'll get into on this floor. I appreciate and agree with both my colleagues before me that stated that this is not something that we have any purview, control, or really any influence, even on the leaders who will ultimately make the decision on something of this sort. I think we all agree, we would not like to see a war in the Middle East right now. There's not a single soul in this room that wants to see a war in the Middle East. And I appreciate my colleague from, from the Fifth explaining some of the weaknesses in the, the, the resolution put forward today. Really, I think we need to get back to work. I'm really sorry, really sorry to see how this has played out. I think the resolution from Monday is still alone. I think, you know, nobody wants to see that ever happen. And if that had been me in that situation, or my family, or my friends, I would have done the same thing. So, you know, although I, I definitely don't want to, I condemn anti-Semitism, I condemn Islamophobia, I don't want to see a war in the Middle East. There are a lot of mistakes, unfortunately, in this, in this resolution, and suggestions that I think put us in a position that we'd be verifying or validating things that are maybe not necessarily true. So, with that, my vote is no.
Schleifer? Burnett?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge the sponsor of this resolution. You have to stand.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree. I think it's time to get back to work. I think that was the case on Monday as well, when another resolution was introduced that wasn't necessarily pertaining to any of our day-to-day work. And so, you know, I, I do understand the, I understand where my colleagues are coming from, and I think I've been pretty clear in my initial statement where I'm coming from, that we should be standing for inclusivity, inclusivity at, at every opportunity we get. That's what was offered here today, and I vote yes, Mr. President.
Bellup?
Yes, please stand.
All right, so, so once again, I also did not expect to be discussing these issues in the council chambers this week, although as both a student of history and a professor, I have time to talk about and digest some of these issues. Primarily, I will be in support of the resolution as it's calling for peace. One of the things I mentioned in terms of the United Nations, in terms of the desire for an extended ceasefire, so that hostages could be released, and that there could be an exchange of a prisoner. So, again, I think the calling for peace is something that is appropriate. I do, I do stand in terms of being against anti-Semitism, anti-Islam, or Islamophobia. So, again, my vote is yes.
Porter?
Yes, please stand.
Thank you, sir. Earlier this week, my colleagues and I had a chance to vote on an issue that, in previous times in this council, we thought was the cornerstone of our democracy and our government at the local, state, and federal level. As a collective, we felt that it was very important to include those of the Muslim faith in this particular resolution today, because they were not included on Monday. Over the last few days, my colleagues and I have experienced the hate from many Baltimoreans, indicating that each of us are antisemitic simply because we chose not, we chose not to engage in the conversation. However, the conversation was brought forth for a vote. And every person, every person that voted yes, every person that voted yes, brought that issue into this chamber. And not only, not only did they bring that issue into this chamber, they brought it to our homes, they brought it to our voicemails, they brought it to our emails, calling us racial slurs. Undermining, what? Undermining, undermining our intelligence, simply because we wanted, we wanted to include a vibrant, under, equally underrepresented community and condemn hate in the city of Baltimore. That is what we are, that is what we are, the crux of the issue here. It is not the fact that we are just simply going to stand by and allow people to simply erase people from history. We will not be silent. And even though we are in the minority, we will not be silent. There have been many people, there have been many people in this city of Baltimore that have experienced hate, Jewish and also Islamic, over the past few weeks. We are here to represent the city of Baltimore. And I just, I, I had the opportunity, I cleared my whole day yesterday. I cleared my whole day, and I pulled the legislative record, and I just happened to query keywords like hate, racism, Islamophobia. And I want to read you some of the names of the sponsors on those respective bills.
We can't do that. We do not read the names of members. We do not call out specific members. We will keep the quorum in this chamber.
Yes, sir.
If there is something with another member, you can say the gentleman from District 4, or the gentlewoman, or whatever you like, from another district, but we will not read out names. Thank you.
Yes, sir, respectfully. I encourage everybody to go on www.legistar.com and start searching the keywords of racism, hatred, terrorism, and see who the sponsors are. hatred, terrorism, and see who the sponsors are. See who the sponsors are that have always stood for Baltimore, that have always stood for people, have stood side by side with colleagues in this chamber, have stood side by side with colleagues in this chamber. To be called an antisemite simply because I wanted to include another underrepresented group, to account for them, to make sure that they are represented for. It's absolutely disgusting. It is not what I know multiple, multiple faiths that I subscribe to, that is not how they operate. And I want to thank those Jewish people that have called us and stood in solidarity with us because they understand that we are all underrepresented and we are all the oppressed group. There is no hierarchy or categorization of hate. Hate is hate. And whenever we make sure that we understand, when we step into this chamber, we are representing all of Baltimore, not a select few. Thank you, Mr. President, my vote is yes.
Thank you.
Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand by the resolution introduced by my colleague from the Fifth District on Monday evening. It was apolitical, it condemned the Hamas terrorist attack on October 7th, and it called for the immediate release of the 240 innocent civilians kidnapped by Hamas. That resolution stands on its own. Condemning senseless and brutal killing, violence, rape, mutilation of raped and murdered women, and kidnapping should not require qualification. It never has before on this city council, and I'm disheartened to see that precedent set on Monday evening. If a council member wishes to condemn Islamophobia, or the life, or the loss of innocent civilian lives in a separate resolution, by all means, go ahead and do so. I think you will find widespread, if not unanimous, support among this body for that. I vote no.
Stokes.
We stand here talking about this resolution, we don't talk about the crime in this city. That's what we should be talking about. We don't should, we should be talking about the racism in this city for black people. We, this is, look at this, this is an issue. The issue is not crime in this city, the issue is not racism for black and brown people in this city, but that's not before us. I've read both resolutions, I believe this is reactive kind of resolution, I want to see humanity, I want to see peace, I vote no.
Ramos.
I'd like to explain my vote.
Yes.
Mr. President and colleagues, I'm voting yes on this resolution. One of the many reasons I love Baltimore is because it is a city of people from all different walks of life. Mr. President and colleagues, I am so sorry this is happening in our world today. I always, I ask, whenever I see my colleagues, I ask about their families because I see the impact that this situation is having on them and their families. It is painful, it is scary. And I'm referring to my colleague from the Fifth District and my colleague from the First. When I took the vote the other day, or did not take the vote the other day and abstained from voting, I thought of the families from Palestine in my district who recently received hate threats and graffiti on their homes, who now feel unsafe. I also thought of the numerous Jewish families in my district who have also experienced threats of violence in the area against them personally and are feeling unsafe. I wondered, what is the unintended consequence of a vote like what would mean on Monday? I could not take a stand against one set of constituents over another. Never, ever did I think it would result in the hate that has come my way to my staff and to me. Together, as a council, we are set to pass historic legislation that begins to eliminate the impact of our racist housing policies in our city. Together, as a council, we have worked to right past wrongs. Together, as a council, we seek protection and services for all of our constituents. These are things that I have worked on for over 30 years and many of you have worked on in your entire careers here in Baltimore. Together, we can take a stand against hate. I emphatically stand against antisemitism, against Islamophobia, I stand against hate and violence, I condemn Hamas and their actions. Our resolution does the same and also calls for a ceasefire to end the violence and death and to try to find a peaceful resolution to a centuries-old conflict. I ask that my colleagues take a stand with me and support this resolution. Thank you.
President Mosby.
Thank you, thank you all for attempting to have some level of appropriate discourse with your fellow council members. I stand here deeply concerned about the state of where we are as a council. One of our members who, parents, siblings, nieces, nephews, family members, was in the midst of a terrorist attack. And that individual wrote a very simplistic, very simplistic resolution. And I told you all before we took this term, I was tired of this council just being about nonsensical, non-binding resolutions, that I wanted to create a body that was going to do substantive legislation. I took this council from 13 committee members and 15 members down to six committees so we could have real discourse. I utilized some of the positions and made policy analysts so we could go aggressively after breaking down some of the draconian systemic racist practices that paralyzed our city for far too long. And of all, the immediate adoption resolutions that you guys have brought in front of this chamber, the one that we decide to vote down is from a member of our body who heart and mind pumps and bleeds for his family in Israel. To be supportive of that, to denounce racism, to denounce antisemitism, to denounce Islamophobia, is not to praise or uplift or support the opposite. It was that simple. And it's disgraceful that we're having this discussion today. We could have easily done like we've done before, supported our colleague, and come back and had unanimous support for some of the concerns that have been addressed today. But for folks to put a resolution before this body, an hour and a half before we meet, that has factual inaccuracies, in the face of trying to not support our colleague and his family, is truly unacceptable. And as President of the City Council, I've never stood up here and never specifically talked about some of our ideological differences, or about our opinions, or our concerns, but as the President of the City Council, I will stand up for a member of this body. And if my family member was in the Middle East, or in the middle of East Baltimore, I would want you to stand up with me. That's why I voted yes, and that's why I'm voting no on this. This is not who we are, we're better than this. Madam Clerk, the resolution fails.
Consent calendar.
Say again. I think the count is seven, five, three, seven, what is it? I'm sorry, you said it right, five to seven with three, five yeses, three, seven noes, three abstentions, three absences. As you can tell, it's still impacting me. Before we jump into the consent calendar, we're going to hopefully lift our spirits up by supporting young folks in the city of Baltimore. We have the legendary Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School men's football team, who are winners of the 2A-1A state championship in football. Come up here, come on, Coach. They're in here with head coach Michael Carter Sr., as well as assistant coach John Dorsey. Come up here, Coach, come on.
Come on.
What's up, brother?
Come on, y'all want to be with you.
I had a chance to walk in the mayor's Christmas parade with the poets from Dunbar, and I don't think that they haven't stopped smiling. This is your third one in how many years?
Three, three years.
Three, three, three-peat?
Three-peat.
Right? And total of 13 altogether. So, the City Council of Baltimore, you hear Councilman Chairman Stokes in the back, you know, he's a huge Dunbar supporter, but the City Council of Baltimore Presidential Citation, I, Nick J. Mosby, President of Baltimore City Council, do hereby present this President's Citation to Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, Class 2A-1A State Champions, in recognition of your record-breaking 13th MPSAA State Championship, and for overcoming extraordinary adversity to accomplish finishing your third straight season undefeated and champions in the state of Maryland. And witness where the city of Baltimore extends its sincerest congratulations, and I've affixed my signature to the citation on this memorable occasion given under the corporate seal of the city of Baltimore this seventh day of December in the year of 2023. Give it up for Paul Lawrence Dunbar Football.
Thank you. Good rest. Hope to see you next year.
Yeah, see you guys next year. See you guys. Give it up again for our young folks. As well as the more seasoned young men who have gotten these amazing young folks. So thank you, Coach. With that, we're going to go over to our consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A. At the back of the agenda is their motion to approve the consent calendar. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for the duration of this meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we will be in short titles. The first bill, we're going to go to ECD, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0408, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, Variance 1046 Brently Avenue.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman Bullock.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This resolution was heard on December 5th, 2023, it was voted favorably, and there are findings and facts on my colleague's desk. I move the findings.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, finding and facts are adopted. Mr. Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion is approved, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0425, improving safety, inhabitability, and supportive in other residential housing.
I would like to recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard in, in committee on December 5th, 2023, was voted favorably as amended, and there are also committee amendments on my colleague's desk. I'd like to move the amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. Now we're going to go to bills on third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0369, high-performance inclusionary housing tax credit. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Congratulations to all the advocates for all the hard work. You guys have done. It's been a long but rewarding process. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0409, zoning conditional use, conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, Variance 2127 McCullough Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0410, rezoning 6311 Eastern Avenue. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0420, residential permit parking program area, Brunt Street area. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0436, urban renewal, Brooklyn-Curtis Bay renewal area designation and urban renewal plan. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0440, sale of property market center renewal plan, 32 properties.
This will be held over pending BOE approval. Now we're going to go to committee announcements. Committee chairs, if you have an announcement, please stand. I see John Bullock, please stand. Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to announce three hearings for the Economic and Community Development Committee, all to be heard on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. The first bill is 220205, vacant structures emergency response fee, that's at 2:00 PM, followed at 2:01 PM for Council Bill 220206, vacant structures registration fees and penalties, to be followed at 2:02 PM with Bill 220225, vacant structures nuisance abatement penalty. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other committee announcements? Hearing and seeing none, are there regular announcements? Is there, yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to invite our colleagues and members of the public to the annual Washington Monument lighting, which is taking place right now in the 11th District in Mount Vernon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge that Sunday will be three years that we've been, since we've been sworn in. I just want to acknowledge and thank my colleagues. I've learned, you know, this has been a very busy year. I continue to learn every day from not just my colleagues, but also from my constituents. I continue to learn every day from not just my colleagues, but also from my constituents as well as our agencies, and I'm really grateful to be able to be here and to serve. And so just wanted to acknowledge our three years as a council together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Any other? Before we close out, are we good? We good? Oh, we do have a regular announcement. Again, I'm a little discombobulated, but on December 13th, 5:30 here at City Hall, will be my third annual Toy Drive. For folks who are listening, you can support it by dropping toys off here at City Hall or going to associatedblackcharities.org/holidaytoydrive, where you can either donate money or you can go on our Amazon wishlist and select a toy and purchase it for a youngster. We ask that toys are nonviolent toys, and we're targeting the ages of two to 12 years of age. Again, the celebration will take place here at City Hall on December 13th, starting at 5:30, where we have young folks in Baltimore City that's going to sing to us, we're going to have a jazz band, food. Oh, yeah, food and much, much more. As you can see, I'm getting all my instructions from the back. Also, remember that clearing of the bills is taking place. If there are any major concerns or problems, please scream at this point, please reach out to Natwana Austin. Councilman Cohen?
All that celebrate this evening.
Thank you. Happy Hanukkah. I just came from the manure lighting with Councilman Cohen and the mayor. At this time, we're going to close out, and I ask that Chairman Schleifer could close this out.
City Council will be held on Monday, December 18th at 3:00 PM.
There being no new business before this desk, this will conclude the 69th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we absolutely love you.